I'll call our special call meeting on the Shawnee Municipal Authority for a work session to order. Call and roll please.
Stevens, AG.
Here.
Karen.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Paul. Winteringer.
Here.
Smith. We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, so let's move forward to work session to discuss the master plan on the water treatment, CIP, and the water distribution. Our goal is to go no longer than an hour and a half, folks. So, it's now 6:30, so we're out of here before our super. Okay. Who's in? Who's on first?
Mayor, City Commission. I've asked Smith Roberts, Boldus Flyler, and the crawl engineers to have this work session with City Commission to further educate the commission in areas that they would like to see focused on in the master plan and maybe weren't quite understood or hard to understand. And help you guys better prepare or better understand this master plan. So I'm gonna turn it over to Tom Prowley, and he's gonna go to the water distribution, or he's gonna go to the water treatment and supply. And if you have any questions for Tom, just go ahead and ask.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We're here today. I don't really have a presentation. I'm just here to answer questions on any of the documents that you have. You should've had an executive summary of the water treatment, a kind of condensed version of Chapter Two is what we're calling it, or the Water Supply and Treatment. And in the end of the document is kind of a table with all of the recommended CIP projects, capital improvement projects, to have both in the water supply and the water treatment system. And a year anticipated and maybe a trigger on which, yeah, sometimes the years are based on population projections, and sometimes they don't happen, obviously. Your growth could be higher, could be lower, so we kind of target it to a range of dates and a trigger. So, I'm here to answer any questions. You know, the purpose of a master plan is to basically define a project and lay it out financially, so you guys have an understanding. The city manager has an understanding of the costs that might be incurred as a result of regulatory pressure, as a result of population expansion, as a result of other aspects of water treatment, particularly of concern was taste and odor. And we outlined a project that would help mitigate that. Also gave you kind of annual costs to be expected, and sometimes you don't need it, sometimes you do. Taste and odor is a complex problem that a lot of water supply systems face. We've given you probably the simplest, lowest maintenance solution. We've given what you have, Mayor.
I didn't get a copy, I guess you didn't furnish it to us, of the young lady's presentation, which was kind of the summary. Did you send that to us?
I didn't give that to...
It was handed out.
Okay.
It was the first one received.
The other night?
Stayed for coffee.
No, 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 this was...
No, I'm talking about the young lady, doesn't that, was that the same thing?
That was me, right?
Right.
That was the water distribution.
Right. Did you, we didn't get a copy of that.
The executive summary in Northport? We handed that out last week.
I got these. But was, okay, the one that you kind of, that PowerPoint that you showed?
Yes.
It's in this book, but I...
The smaller one's the summary.
It says small one is the same thing?
No, the small one's the summary.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, I looked at the big one, but I didn't realize that was a summary, so.
Big summary.
Didn't seem like your presentation took that long.
Yeah.
But... So this is on, what she was presenting on was the distribution side, which is once you've treated it, you gotta pump it out and distribute it to your customers. What I'm presenting on is basically, you know, do you have enough water supply? Do, how do you treat it, you know, from West Watkins, from Twin Lakes? How do we meet the future regulations? How do we meet the taste and odor challenges? How do we meet the, you know, the wear and tear that is occurring right now at the water plant, you know, with any mechanical equipment you're gonna have that? So, we kind of went through and did an evaluation.
But what volume is that?
That's volume two.
Probably what he...
Should be something that you've had probably... Oh gosh, do you remember when we turned it in? Volume one, I'm sorry, it's volume one. Chapter two.
I have an executive summary of Chapter Two.
That's it?
I guess one of the things that you did, she laid out so graciously for us, you know, a plan of what we should be looking at doing first, and second, and third. I guess my challenge is, how much money, you know, where are we gonna get the money to do it? And he said, do you think under our current structure and the money that we're putting in, the money we're putting in, we're using for mine replacement and pretty much, aren't we?
Yeah, we did a file to kind of refresh everybody, particularly Lisa, because she wasn't here when a lot of that went on, but, you know, about five years, but I think November's our last rate increase, and it's a small rate increase for sewer. And it is tied to some capital projects that we had thought we would do, about $26 million of it originally. I think the only project that we left off, Steve, was, was the raw water line from the Toa line to Twin Lake Number One. We felt, we felt as though, after we did the yield study, that we had plenty of water for the 50-year planning period, barring some really, really dry spell of three years with no rain or so. And, but other than that, we budgeted annual increases in operation costs, and we budgeted for those capital projects. Since then, the City Commission has refinanced the West Watkins reservoir, a progressive, I think, and aggressive repayment strategy. We've already refinanced that debt twice now. This would be the last time that we'll refinance it. It will be paid off, I think, in eight years. And then, in the meantime, what we talked about doing, and I don't have a copy of it here, I could probably go find it, was talk about doing some of the projects in the water treatment and sewer treatment phase on a cash basis, with existing revenues that are coming in for a number of years while we pay off some of those, some of those water notes that we refinanced and things like that, and not necessarily take a look at rate increases right now. I know that these guys, I'll tell you, in the years that I've been doing water and sewer planning and administration, the regulations change every day. I think now there's like eight agencies between the federal government and the state government that oversee what we do. So, well, I wish they'd just get together and have just one, and we'd hear from one boss, but sometimes those unfunded mandates come down, so I can never unequivocally tell the City Commission that we would never have some sort of mandate that would cause us to have to gear up for a new treatment process, or some sort of, something that happened out there with our reservoirs. I know that these guys are already trying to work toward implementing some of the water treatment processes with our filter media and things like that, as an example of a start where we can, we can do some things that have some cost to them, but they're on a cash basis. That's kind of where I'd like to, you know, have some discussion tonight, is talk to the Commissioners about what some of those projects were that we identified that we could do in the next few years that would, you know, increase our flow, decrease our taste and odor type problems. This time of year is a real interesting part of the year for us, because we have dead-end lines that, that get that odor in, and because the water doesn't flow through them, we have requirements to flush those. But we also have issues with, with our raw water in terms of dissolved oxygen that's in it, and if we're not careful about that, it gets into the system and our treatment processes don't notice what the water tastes like and smells like. And it was long story short, we monitor that pretty closely, but there was a method that they proposed that we'd take advantage of at West Watkins, that where we added an additive to the water, I can't remember what it was, but that's something that we need to be talking about doing so that we can continuously use West Watkins and rely on it for our raw water stream, so.
So how many dollars we looking at there?
It's in the report. So what we recommended, and I don't have these off the top of my head, you must have it. What I, what we recommended was a kind of a multi-level control of taste and odor. So taste and odor is, are compounds that are caused by algae blooms within reservoirs. And with the, you know, nutrient loading on West Watkins and Twin Lakes, it's, I mean, you guys can't control the watershed. Given that, it's only gonna get worse as the years go by. So what we recommended was a kind of a multi-leveled approach. The first approach would be to purchase a boat and add either a compound called Earthac or Cutrin, which is basically an algaecide in the lakes, particularly West Watkins, which seems to be more vulnerable to the taste and odor.
You said, excuse me, purchase what?
A boat.
A boat?
We have a boat, I think.
A pontoon boat.
Yeah, a pontoon boat where you, basically, it's very simple. You take a Cutrin in 55-gallon drums, and periodically, once a season, you...
Circle it around the lake.
Dump it in a prop, and it mixes it into the lake. And, but that prop has to be a certain level, and you need to do a little bit of research on counting algae within the water comb, on where to apply it.
Stevie in the middle all night.
Yeah. You know, it's all, it's all in the report.
Yeah, I know, but, I mean, we've got enough reports to read. I'm just trying to think about...
Well, I've gone through line by line on this wastewater master plan.
Well, what I'm hoping that you can do, because I, I'm guilty if I'm reading all this, is kind of a high-level overview of those steps that you outlined, and let's concentrate...
It's in that executive summary.
And I have...
What page?
Executive summary, Water and Wastewater Capital Improvement Plan. Okay, that one, okay. I don't have that one with me. But if you don't mind, if you could just kind of go over the highlights of that?
Sure.
And let's put a price tag on it, and see what we can accomplish in the next five years, that's what I want.
Right. Sure.
What I'm worried about is we're gonna lose, potentially we could lose two key water income sources. We basically've already lost one, which is major income to the city, south of town, and then another one potentially that we could lose. So, I mean, that, let's say $50,000, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, it's somewhere around that range. It's somewhere around the $50,000 range. And then, your next project would be at the water plant. What we have found out was that the water plant, incapacity-wise, is limited by exfiltration process, okay? Another barrier to taste and odor would be to install, was activated carbon, like, you know, you have in your fridges, you know, filters. The activated carbon does get used and does get spent, but it's a good way to remove the taste and odor compounds. So, the first step would be to add this algaecide to prevent these algae, these taste and odor compounds, algae-causing, sorry, these algae that cause the taste and odor compounds from forming.
At both lakes, or...
At, we would recommend it first at West Watkins, but budget is in there for both lakes, okay?
And you said around $50,000?
Yeah, I think so, Steve, do you have that number? Otherwise, I can pull that up.
Yeah. We'll just, if we didn't...
Well, rather than, you know, just let me pull this up, rather than...
Okay.
Have to eat drag out.
Well, it's a couple times a year, and it's really bad, you know, and it affects...
It's always summer.
It's always summer, and it seems like...
Right. So, the second step would be to add a filter, a media, that would absorb the taste and odor compounds once it formed. So first step is prevention.
So, boat and chemical, you're saying, would be $50,000 approximate measure? Yeah. Okay, how about us getting a P-Row from Louisiana, and Brian, you paddle real fast, and we could mix it down?
I'll volunteer my boat, I'll go.
Your boat would be perfect, I think.
So the second step would be to install the filter media, and that's a, that's a little bit more of an expensive project. We're talking about roughly around $3 million to repair the filters, expand the media, raise the filter troughs, and add the media. And you also have hydraulic restrictions that you have to deal with. But this, this actually takes care of two birds with one stone. It not only provides you a taste and odor control measure, it also expands the filtration process to let, to allow you to have a greater capacity through the filters. And if you remember, that one year, you had a very difficult time producing water.
Do you oversee these changes and stuff, or...
Do I oversee what?
Do you oversee the changes that we're making?
No, that would have to go out through their, your RFP process.
Three million dollars.
On one of these reports, you said, we're talking about the yield for West Watkins, and the yield for the Twin Lakes at 4.7 and 5.5, is that million gallons per day value?
Yes. Yeah, okay. So, I agree with the city manager and Steve, that you have enough capacity with even the drought yield at both of these reservoirs to take you to foreseeable future, and that you don't need any supplemental source of water supply.
And here's another one I picked up, says following this, a low-lift water station should be constructed at MacArthur.
Correct.
To increase the current transmission capabilities.
Right. So, when you're talking about reservoirs, you talk about, because of the way you guys have your water, raw water system, you have the lakes which store the water, and we have to look at the lakes on what an annual average consumption is. So over a year, do you have enough storage, enough supply in that water to last you the whole year, subsequent years? Okay. The second thing is, how much can we get from a peak day perspective? Meaning, a peak day. So if you look at water demands, they're pretty low in the winter, and then they peak up in summer, right? And what happens is you have a transmission main, and a lake, and your water plant's here, right? And that flows by gravity, right now, but when you start getting higher flows, peak days, right, that storage doesn't count once it's at the plant. So now you've got to transmit the peak day through the raw water line, through the plant, and into your distribution system. And what I'm saying is, this is just lining up to a certain point about 20 years from now. And then you're gonna have to, then the flow gets so much that this level isn't high enough to force it all the way through, so you need a pump station to lift it to the plant.
Because we're gravity-fed to our plant.
Yeah, you're gravity-fed now, and you're gonna be gravity-fed in about 20 years from now.
As long as the level is...
As long as the level is a certain level, and then after that, you're gonna need a pump station. But that should say a year, right? 2021 or 2025?
So we're not looking at funding that in the five years?
No. That's not on your five-year CIP.
But the $3 million and the $50,000, we are looking at doing right away, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And on the, the MacArthur Road is actually at the Congo.
Oh, okay.
It's MacArthur on one side of the hill at the Congo.
Okay.
And we have that, and then we have the water tower that we're desperate to need up, right?
Well, there are two different towers that we're recommending.
So we're talking about, you know, five or six million dollars here, huh?
Well, let me, let me kind of work through to what we were, what we were recommending right away. So, the first two items that I was talking about was, was that, okay? The Cutrin at the lake, and then the, and then the, get full of my executive summary. The Cutrin at the lake, and then the filter augmentation, a $3 million project. And it's now staying at the water plant. Uh, yeah, I had $50,000 for the boats. Staying at the water plant. I had for the low-lift pump station, yeah, about 2027 is the low-lift pump station, so you won't have, it's not...
So we don't, it's not an issue?
No.
Okay, that's 2027.
Yeah. So, on the water plant, I had the filter media replacement project. The, eventually, the next biggest project would be a new backwash tank, okay?
What tank?
New backwash water storage tank. What's happening now is this. The high-service pumps during, during the, during the peak day, let's just imagine this, we're pumping out 7 million gallons a day. We have to backwash the filter. So that means we gotta take it from what we're pumping out, and we gotta have another pump pump it into the filter. The problem is, is the filter's here, right? Imagine, your pumps are here, your filter's here, right? And your tower's way up here, meaning that these pumps are really designed to pump up there, and they're not really designed to pump into a filter. And so what happens is when you turn it on, you pull a whole bunch of water from your distribution system, and you hammer it. You know, a water hammer is, it can cause damages to your pipes, and I think you've seen it.
Yeah, you see the tower just spike down.
Yeah, and that's not never good for a distribution system to hammer it like that, especially, you know, when you're looking at a 24-inch main, that's a big, big, big pressure to hammer. And so that can cause damage within your system, it can cause color problems from surge, waves reverberating around the pipe, and dislodging material. So eventually, the next project, and when you do that, we did put that on like a five-year CIP, the next project would be to install a new backwash tank, and that's, I think I have that as 1.2 million.
What year is it?
I have that in being installed in about 2016, 2017.
Okay, number one is the $50,000, number two is the backwash tank.
No.
Yep.
I thought number...
Number one is $50,000 at copper sulfate feet at the lake. Number two is about a 3-point...
Oh, filtration.
Is the filter, then the backwash tank, and then finally, as you expand, you're gonna need more clearwell capacity. And a clearwell is basically a place where you do disinfection and where you do storage within a plant. And it makes up and allows them to operate the plant easier, okay? It's always a little bit difficult to justify clearwells to city councils, because you guys have never operated a water plant, but it's always almost essential to have a larger clearwell volume, and a clearwell that you can take out. Right now, their clearwell is, if it goes out, you're done.
What is a clearwell?
A clearwell is a point after the filters where you're storing the finished water, what we call finished water, and your pumps pull out of that and pump into the distribution system. And what it allows to do is, you know, your, your operational, you know, is not always perfect within a water plant, right? If the clearwa, if you didn't have any clearwell, you gotta operate that plant perfectly all the time to feed those pumps. Otherwise, that clearwell, they allow that clearwell to go up and down. So as your peak day and your number of people increase, a clearwell volume, you need more, okay?
So we need more volume?
And the problem with your clearwell is you only have one.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, we need more volume, or we need another clearwell?
Both, more.
Okay.
Okay, how much a clearwell tank?
The clearwell I have in there at, at $3.5 million. Now, all of this includes engineering and construction.
Is that just one clearwell we need?
Yeah, it's a 2-million gallon clear, no, 1-million gallon clearwell.
Or it's seven, almost 7.3 now.
We'll keep our other clearwell?
Yes.
So we'll have two clearwells?
Yes. And that clearwell is recommended about 2018. So that's just within your five-year window, right? The other projects, which is a new chemical building that'll eventually have to be done to rehabilitate, replace, can be deferred to, you know, beyond five years.
It's almost like they should borrow that money while the money is cheap.
Well, that's the whole purpose of why we're doing this, is to allow you guys to have the power to make the decision, right? To do a cost of service study.
Well, this is just water, we still have sewer.
I know, I'm just saying. So we're at 7.3 million we need in five years.
Oh, when?
Yeah.
Well, according to their schedule, they're saying...
Yeah, we need it in five years, 7.3 million in five years.
And remember, Commissioners, when I say doing things with cash, that doesn't necessarily mean that we go out and, and wait until we have $3 million saved up to build the clearwell, or to do the filter media. That could mean that we go get some sort of short-term loan at low interest rates, and we pay it with existing rates that we're getting from our customers now, as in not raising rates. That's what I say when I mean cash.
Sure. And, and, you know, for most projects, and Steve mentioned it, and it's been a while since I've looked at this, but his point is well-taken. On the chemical building, which is about a, it's a, it's an expensive project, it's about a $4 million project, and this is right on the cusp of your five-year. There's usually multiple reasons why we do things, okay? So the clearwell was a couple reasons. You need more storage, you don't have, you only have one spot, if it fails, you're done. The taste, the filters, more capacity, taste and odor. For the chemical building, it's two reasons. First, the chemicals, that the current chemical building is about 30 years old, and those tanks, our FRP tanks, they don't usually last about 20. So some of them are leaking, and they're doing their best they can to maintain, okay? So they're old, and we gotta replace them. The second reason is, is that they're, right now, you shouldn't be storing an acid next to a base. When they spill, they form hydrogen gas, and hydrogen gas is flammable, it's toxic, so it's, it's a hazard as well. And those two chemicals are stored right next to each other in the same room, which is, should never be done. It was just, it's just done, it was just done years ago. So, that was the two reasons why we would want to do a chemical building.
I see him selling one of those little sheds up here on Harrison for $875. Could we put that chemical in that little shed and set it next to it?
Unfortunately not. Unfortunately, the tanks are about as big as this room.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow. So how much was the chemical building?
That was 4.3 million.
So now we're at 2019.
And that's...
Now, have we addressed the additional homes that are being built, like Craig Brown's addition, which is what, 100 homes?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven homes, and we've addressed the ones out by the Elks Club?
Well, we've mostly been talking, Mayor, about water treatment, we need to get into the distribution side.
But I'm just saying, is all, well, all what you're telling us here handled up to, let's say, an additional 250 homes in our city?
Oh, yes. So what you're saying... Once you do your filter improvements, you're good to go. The clearwell's there for, you know, it's probably for capacity-wise, it's there at 2018, but for redundancy-wise, it'd be better to get it done sooner rather than later, right? I mean, we were, we were kind of conservative in our projections sometime.
You know, from my perspective, I've always, especially after we got the yield analysis, I quit losing sleep at night, whether or not we had raw capacity or not. Then we had an issue with the line, you guys will remember, where it was full of calcium from the lake, and over the years, we didn't know we were supposed to be cleaning that stuff out. We got that dealt with. We got to about 8 million gallons a day, and that suffices for, for 11 months out of the year. And that one month, we got a lot of people watering their grass and putting water in their pools, and it's hotter than heck out there, and so we're, my problem with this, with the water treatment, and expansion of the plant, redundancy is always important. You wanna make sure that when you're providing water, that you have redundancy. But, 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 you're exactly right, Mayor, there are millions and millions and millions of dollars that we're talking about here for capacity. And just as OGN E is having smart hours so they can produce less electricity between the hours of 2 and 7, that keeps them from having to spend billions on electric generation. There are some other ways that we can look at, but regardless, we're gonna grow, and we need to have some of these things in place so that when a ministry comes here and says that they want to locate in Shawnee, and they need a million gallons of water a day, that we can accommodate that. So, it's a balance, but these guys are making a recommendation for a planning period that's, you know, 20, 30, 40 years in advance, and so we have to decide what we wanna invest in and what bang for the buck we get back on.
Yeah, I mean, the whole purpose of this, and wait till you see the wastewater numbers, I mean, they're worse.
Yeah, I remember those.
The whole purpose of this is to provide you with the power to make decisions. The whole purpose of this is to provide you with the power to, to make decisions, to plan. Okay? We could provide you with a recommendation, and we have, on when to do things and how to do them, but eventually, it's your decision, and you have to look at the finances. But what we're doing is we're setting you up to do that.
What I want is a single page that says what it is, when it needs to be done, by, and how much it costs. I mean, there's all this other, just just case, and I've read four out of five of these books. On every paragraph, you're talking about, you start about with need to be this, need to be that, and more specifically on the sewer plant. So what we need, and I don't wanna go through all these books every time, so what I need is a sheet of paper that tells me in 20, in next year, we need to be done this, next year, we need to be done this, and what it's costing.
We can get you that.
Okay. But I'm not gonna go through this book every time.
Unlike you, it just, I keep-
We can absolutely do that.
But that's what, of course, I'm concerned. That tells us what the-
Same way with the sewer.
This is, this is excellent reference, and there's a lot of technical material-
All it does is, it said, it, it, all it is is the backup support for the numbers that we're giving you. And the, the reason why we want to do this project, the reasons. So what, what I would do is I would say, here's the project, this is why we're doing it. This is how much it costs.
Which is the same why you're doing it, it's in the book.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll provide one single sheet for water, wastewater, distribution systems, kinda like a crib sheet, right? That's what he's getting at. What, what the project is, why you're doing it, how much it costs, when, when, when we recommend you spend the money. And then have a run in total of what it is on each, on the water, wastewater side.
And I'll share this with you Commissioners, as far as Atoka line, that's really a joke, and I'm gonna tell you why. When we had the drought here, they added Atoka, and guess what's gonna happen? Who owns Atoka?
Oklahoma City.
Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City owns it, and they will cut it, I mean, why would they sell to us if they don't have water? Same way they did out in western Oklahoma, right? They sucked their water, they drained-
Drained the, Canton Lake.
Canton Lake. So, you know, we're just, it's kind of a, at the mercy of them, if we're thinking, but last year or year before, I went down and looked at Atoka, and it was about as, it was worse than our lake.
What I will say is that your yield study shows that you don't need an additional water source. That's, that's great news. You understand that that is the single highest cost associated with any water system, is to procure a supply.
Part two of the market.
And you guys got that then. So you should, I mean, I understand this is some money, and we're talking about, you know, expending money at the water plant, but this is really great news, that you have enough water supply.
Yeah, we're blessed to be like that.
But remember, Commissioners, I mean, you guys refinanced the West Watkins debt. It's coming off here in about five, six more years. The raw water line debt and the, and the water plant improvements, that was another seven or eight million bucks. You know, we, we, we've got 15 million that's coming off here in the next five years or so. So, and that's, that's why we're planning and preparing for this, so that I agree with you, Mayor, I mean-
I think it's great, I'm just saying, it's, it's a critical time that we gotta figure out.
I just want you to know that our, our plan as a staff is, is to, is to program those things, so that we, we knew this stuff was coming. Because I remember two years ago when you refinanced it, we knew this stuff was coming. And so we were a little bit behind the eight ball, but we're getting some of it paid off so that we can get some of these new things taken care of. All the while, we're doing a lot better maintaining our distribution network, both water and sewer.
Do we see doing any of these capital improvements before the, some of those other loans are paid off, within the next five years?
Yes, ma'am, we can, we can begin to engineer those and, and put them in place while, while those other loans are being paid down on a regular basis. And then we'll be ready for them.
For the distribution system, you can take care of some of the short lines, too, with President Reddick.
Mm-hmm. You got me.
Okay, that helps a lot.
Yeah, what, what we can do, we're gonna be back on the 28th. And so what we'll do is before then, we'll, we'll give you that sheet that you want. And we'll talk about the water and the wastewater that day. You know, what bothers me a little more is the wastewater. We just gotta make sure that South Plant performs. If it doesn't, that's an extremely large expense that you're, what I mean by what it, when it doesn't, I mean, it fails the ODQ criteria for keeping critters alive with the wastewater outlets.
Did we overlook an additional pump down there, or is that in the distribution side of it?
Well, we, we were looking at a-
That was in her side, okay.
Yeah, that's in her side. Yeah. We, I don't, I don't wanna get too much into wastewater now, but we'll get, we'll get into that.
That was wastewater that we talked about, not water.
But can you go through the water distribution the way you did the water for us?
Sure. Sure. So the, the water treatment is basically summarized in, in those tables, and we'll, we'll kinda condense it to one table for everything. Lindsay and Max did most of the work on the distribution system. I know that involves a, a new tank, so I'll let her talk about it.
If you guys have volume one with you up there?
I don't have it with me.
I have it with me, I have it.
I have it.
I didn't have a suitcase to carry all that.
What page do you have, Frankie?
Two dash sixty-eight, it has, it has the, it has an outline, kinda like your, your one.
That's volume one.
Two dash six-eight.
Six A is an alphabet?
Eight.
Eight, sixty-eight.
Two dash sixty-eight has the projects, the year, design, construction, and cost. And I believe that's similar to what they want.
Okay, well, I've got that line on my-
It's similar, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take those, probably change them a little bit, and just do the, show the five years.
Thank you.
Four years, yeah.
Yeah.
There, yeah.
That just is a, you know, there's a table for water supply, there's a table for water treatment, and then there's a table for water distribution. So you're looking at three tables. What we can do is consolidate it all in the one, and give you just a big massive table.
Well, I think as Commissioners, as we sit here, we're needing to see, you know, how much money-
Yeah, you need to see everything in front of you, I understand that.
That we need, that in a short synopsis, then we gotta start figuring out where to get it.
Yeah.
You know, we gotta borrow it, what do we do, or where do we go?
No, I, I think we're at the point now where we can do that. I mean, before, the treatment was a little bit ahead of the distribution, because you kinda gotta, have to do with a model from scratch, so that takes quite a bit of time. So the treatment always was a little bit ahead, so now that we have everything, we can compile it for you.
Okay, we're, I'm on page two sixty-eight, you got, add copper sulfate, systems of lake.
Yeah, that's the boat, and-
Okay. Construction, what's point three-two and point eight?
Point four is $40,000, or 400, sorry. I thought that was, no, that should be 40,000 rather than 40.
Which one?
Uh, WT dash one, if you go all the way to the left.
You got point four-zero?
Yeah.
Is that in, in per million?
Yes.
Okay.
So the filter media replacement is 2.45, the filter piping replacement's 0.75, and that's where I came with over a little bit, over three million. And then the backwash tank is 1.2. And then the finished water clearwell's 3.5. We have some rapid mix improvements that are 150,000, and then the new chem, chemical building's 4.3 million. And then you have, you know, redundancy improvements, clarification, where you rehabilitate the clarifiers. A new clarifier eventually in 2022, when you exceed what, let me point out, the, the capacity existing and proposed. So after you do the filter media replacement, your filters go from 5.65 to about 7.5, and then 7.5 to 11.2 million gallons a day rating.
Wow.
Just to look at that middle column.
Could you go up a dime on those Sonic drinks and give it all to us?
So, that's where my confusion was. I've, I've seen these pages, but I didn't know what point forty was. In my math, that's 40 cents, and $2.45.
That's costing millions.
So I didn't know that was per million.
That wasn't real clear.
So I didn't see that explanation either.
Yeah, to the very top.
CIP costing millions, two and three.
The notes are down below. So note two says-
Well, again, I still like his one-page suggestion, or two-page, you know, just saying here, this bullet points.
Okay, where's the other one now for the?
The water supply?
Yeah.
It's, uh, let me tell you what page that's on. Are you looking at chapter one, or are you looking at the executive summary?
Chapter, volume one, yeah.
Chapter one. I'll pull that up for you.
Two dash what?
Seventeen. So it's up further, it's closer to the front.
Two dash seventy.
Seventeen.
Oh, I like seven.
That's all right, it's closer to the front. You got it, that's the water supply. Now, really essentially, the water supply projects are basically the tutoring application of the, the intakes in the lake, and buying a boat to allow yourself to do that. You don't really need to do much on the other projects until 2027, if you've seen that. Rehabilitate the e, intake, and then the low-lift pump station, we really didn't have a prediction on when that would occur, simply because it's so far out. And then there's also a, a small project to, to install redundant air and vacuum relief valves. And that, the reason is, the reason for that project is, is that when air relief valves bind up, you also bind up the pipe. You get air trapped in it, and it acts like a bottleneck. So you always gotta have, especially on raw water, it's corrosive, it's got a lot of solids in it, so it'll plug those air relief valves. So the idea is, is you have about six or seven. So the idea is to build a little tree and have two of them. And you take one offline, take it to a shop, rehab it. Every year, you replace it, and you take the old ones out, rehab it, just kinda rotate. It's a good, good idea to do it on raw water lines, because they can be corrosive and they can plug those little orifices that you rely on for your process. You get air in the pipe, it's really hard to, to push it through.
What does that do to your valves?
Uh, it, 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 and it's control valves. If you get air, a lot of air, it can cavitate. It can cause the vapor pressure, it come out the vapor pressure, and then on the backside of the valve, when the pressure increases, it slams the air cavity and can cause damage to your valves. It's a good question.
So just that page alone is, is about seven, $750,000.
Yeah, yeah, but the, if you look at 2027, is the rehabilitate the intake, so-
But for 2015, that's pretty quick, so you're talking about, about 150,000.
Hundred fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, that's where I got the, the $50,000 for the boat. We'll summarize that in the table, I think that's a really good idea. So we're in 2015, 2015, right, so budget? Yep. Yeah.
Now, what she covered the other night was-
These are just our recommendations, these aren't yours.
What she covered the other night with them was about some lines within our existing lines that were too small, is that correct?
Now, that's on the distribution system.
Any more questions on this, Ken?
Thank you. And so inevitably, when you fix the treatment, you move the problem down to the distribution system, so, and that's what she's here to talk about.
And then after the distribution, then we gotta figure out-
Somebody's house.
Comes back, and the sewer, right?
And the sewer, right.
And comes back to the flex system, they go through the creek.
I would say we're the only utility that lets you, gives you clean pot of water, and you pollute it, and then we take it back.
Not all of it, but probably about eighty-nine percent.
Yeah. But no other utility does that. You pay for your cable, you pay for your phone, you pay for whatever, they don't take it back.
They take the phone back, but it's costing them a deal.
Okay. Let's move into the, I guess, the-
Distribution.
Distribution.
I'm Max Baldishweiler, and this is Lindsay. We were here last Monday presenting on the distribution executive summary. And our efforts last Monday were to lay out a schedule for pipe replacements based on the annual maintenance budget. And Lindsay presented the fact that we looked at not only fire protection, water age, old pipes, and undersized pipes. So we overlapped those to find out which ones were the highest priority, and we laid them out in that executive table there to show first year, second year, third year, on up to the 14th year, based on the annual maintenance budget, how much pipe you could replace, and which were the most critical pipes. And we drew maps on there, showing you exactly where they are. So the staff, city staff, in the first year can go look at certain streets and certain pipe sizes, and they can identify which ones they need to prioritize, and how much it still costs. And those dollars that Lindsay presented this Monday, the dollars in today's dollars, that as we move forward, especially into the 2030 model, then we have adders, that obviously the cost of everything goes up. But it's laid out in a, in a manner that is easy for the staff to understand and plan. So I just wanted to give you a refresher, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay, on this model of pipes of 2030, which one, what color of those did you say need to be, or is it on a sheet before that that need to be replaced?
So if you look under appendix A, we have three figures. If you look at the third figure-
A what?
It'll be appendix A, the third figure, it's ES dot A dot three.
ES A dash three.
Mm-hmm. So these are the pipes that have been identified as either needing in addition to the system or as an upgrade, and they're color-coded by size. And this is kind of a broad overview of the whole city. If you're interested in a particular pipe, we've created a directory under appendix C that shows a description of where the pipe's located, and then kind of a zoomed-in aerial of that pipe. The existing size, the proposed size, the length, the cost it would be to, to construct and, and complete that upgrade.
So that eight dash three, or eight point three, is that the size it should be, or that's the size they are now?
That's the size it should be, the proposed size.
But they're smaller than that now, so it's-
That's correct. Either that or they don't exist, yes.
So is this to keep, we'll say, fresh water, so you don't have to get out, blow a plug or whatever else to keep fresh water, huh?
It's just to maximize the efficiency of the system. She talked about last week the chlorine system that has used water age, dead-end lines, fire flow for commercial buildings versus private residences, the sections of towns where you have the really old pipe that needs to be replaced at some point, and then the velocities. Only a couple, two or three pipes that were undersized for velocity. And again, I wanna make the point that the model that we did in the summer is your historical worst day, so all of our modeling is based on that. So generally speaking, other than the water age, which is running the winter model, generally speaking, we're looking at, depending on how you look at it, the best or worst case, the highest demand day in the summer.
So what we really need to look at is appendix B, the proposed current upgrades, right, and additions.
Yes, appendix B is laid out in numerical order, but it does cover every upgrade that we recommend to the existing-
D, is it R?
B.
B and O.
B, yes.
And it's like pipe two fourteen, two twenty-eight, and so forth?
Yes, that's correct. So they're in the numerical order, but they do cover all the proposed upgrades. In appendix D is where we list the priority that we considered.
So pipe two fourteen is the number one priority if we go to fix something, is it in that order?
No, it's, it's, I'm sorry, it's in numerical order by pipe number, that, that is the pipe number in our, in our model.
But it's not prioritized in the budget, so...
Appendix D is prioritized, so if we, if we flip to appendix D, we'll see, we have it laid out in annual, um, pipes that would be upgraded. So we would see in the first year, we've identified nine, pipe nine ten, eight ninety-two, eight ninety, nine forty-four, nine sixty-two, and eight eighty-eight as pipes that are of the highest priority to be upgraded.
So you bought your budget about a million dollars per year, right?
Between one and two million dollars, that's correct.
So how many miles or feet of, that all is altogether?
Altogether, no, but we've listed a length for each pipe there.
If we'd identified that, can we go back and look at...
Oh, okay.
Number, if we're looking at D, we could refer back to the B.
Yes, that's correct, the pipe direction.
Just go back and forth with the number, huh?
Yes.
Pipe D number, so if we, we're looking, or nine ten?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's on page B nine.
Right, so nine ten tells us that it's length a thousand and sixty feet.
That's correct.
Right, just going back and forth, okay.
And then it also lists the reason for that particular proposed upgrade. So a lot of the pipes that are, are listed really high on the priority have multiple, um, they overlap in upgrades that, and benefits that they offer to the city. So for example, nine ten, uh, is an upgrade that would improve both fire flow and water quality.
So originally, Steve, how was the decision made to know what size pipe you needed to lay, or did you? In some of these cases?
Well, section lines, we, we require twelve inch lines, and, uh, off the section line, we probably require eighty inch and six inch, and so...
So that's just a rule that you go by?
And that's proven, uh, true in the model also.
Generally, Commissioner, the DEQ doesn't allow smaller than six inch diameter. And, well, in the model, what we look at first is velocity, we don't want to exceed the, uh, appropriate velocity, eight feet per second is maximum. And then we also want to look at available flow for fire protections, and, uh, so there's multiple criteria that we look at.
Yes, and, um, Max mentioned that we want to eliminate the pipes that are below six inch, and if you look on the first figure in appendix A, this shows the current system with the line sizes by colors, and there are some si- some lines that's small, it's two inches. So it shows you, you know, how much the city's grown over the years, and in a way, outgrown the existing size of the system.
This also includes, says one million gallon elevated water storage tank, is that cost in here?
That's correct, it is listed in appendix D under the first year, but we, uh, did not include it in the one to two million budget that we used in our schedule per year. So we, um, we propose that the water tower would have separate funding.
Now, if I'm looking at D, it says estimate twenty fourteen.
Yes, so the dollar, the prices here are twenty fourteen dollars.
Is everything on D one and D two twenty fourteen that needs to be done, or... And D three?
Yes, so these are all the proposed upgrades to the existing system, um, by, and they're laid out by year. So you can see year one, we proposed these upgrades, two, and then it goes all the way through...
Okay, year one, year two, okay.
Yeah, all the way through to year fourteen.
So where's the tower, in that, year four?
Year two.
Um, year one, actually, yeah, I'm sorry, it, between, it should ideally be installed the first year, but, um, as soon as you could.
Right here.
And that's one...
That's on, that's on page D one.
Yes.
And it's got a line, and it's in year two.
Well, we separated it out because we included that with, or we proposed that that tower had separate funding.
Oh, okay.
That's the only reason for the line there, because we, but we totaled the year one upgrades above it.
Now, where was the location of that tower, where did we find that?
It's ne- uh, we proposed it next to the Edwards Tower. On the same site, so in a way, they would act, uh, simultaneously, they would, um, increase and then decrease at the same time, they'd be proposed to be built at the same elevation.
So if you go back here to the pipe layout, say on A, is Edwards Tower located on that?
Well, this is the existing system, so the Edwards Tower is small, but yes, it's on there, and then the proposed tower would be right next to that.
Proposed tower would be what?
Right next to the Edwards Tow- the Edwards Water Tower.
Where is that, Ken?
I don't have a clue.
You know...
It's in the southeast part of town.
Keith said it was near his house, I don't know where a water tower is in the south...
What streets are that, Steve?
It's right on Edwards and the South.
What?
It's off Highland.
It's just a block north of Highland.
Oh, okay.
But it's not here.
If you put it behind that snow cone, you can't, yeah.
There's a water tower in that area?
Yeah.
I've never noticed that.
I think I've got pictures of that somewhere, but...
God, that tells you how blind I am.
So, so...
It's a big wolf font.
Okay.
Yeah, I see it, okay.
I remember Keith saying it was out near his house, out that way.
Well, that's a little away from his house.
Yeah, I see. So that's runs between a million, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, or nine hundred and thirty thousand, is what you're saying for a water tower?
Yes.
Are you talking about a standpipe type tower, or are you talking about a similar, uh, round thing at the, up to the top, or what are you talking about?
Generally, it's the round type.
What?
The round pipe.
We would want it to...
Elevated.
Elevated.
We would want it to act simultaneously with the existing tower out there, since the existing tower is...
May match it?
Yes, exactly.
It's also got, uh, enhanced seismic design.
It's what?
Seismic two A, z- earthquake zone.
Oh, okay.
We made sure that we put that in there.
Would that fit on our existing property there, did we have the rights, I mean...
Yeah, looks like we did. Just went going there. I, I guess, I know where that is now, just never really paid that much attention to it. Used to run over on, what is that, uh, park? Well, that rock, yeah.
Is that to supply water pressure out by Grove and haul out through there? Where, that's where the growth is, I'm wondering...
Well, it's also a High Point, part of the High Point town.
Okay, so, so it's on a High Point of the town.
Well, the highest point in town's up, where that, we bought that property, a hundred and sixty acres out there, that's highest point in town.
We have a pressure zone map in the report that shows each elevated tower and what area it impacts in town. There's four towers, four pressure zones, so you can see pretty much exactly the area of town that's impacted by that tower.
Yeah, if you have...
Downtown Shawnee, which tower did on?
The two that are on MacArthur.
If you have, uh, the full report, that's in appendix A, figure two. We didn't include it in the executive summary, but it is in the full report. And so because the proposed tower would be right next to the Edwards Tower, it would act as the same pressure zone.
So it wouldn't help out any other zones?
No.
Well, it'd been my concern that commercially, there's not enough supply out north of town.
Well, you have the Wolverine Tower, north of High Point. The Wolverine Tower, let's see, I believe it's one million gallon? Half a million gallon?
It's what?
Five hundred thousand gallons, half a million gallon.
Is the tank over here on Federal still in good shape, good, huh? It's still two up yet?
But one already done, what's, seven, eight years ago, or something like that, maybe ten.
It hasn't been too long ago.
Cool.
We, we paid dearly to Utility Service Corporation to maintain those inside and out, and so they, they come in every year and do one, or at least every other year, they, I think it's every five years they come in.
Every other year they do it, too.
Okay.
Did you find the second figure? Figure two.
There's a lot of theories on, on water towers, I think you probably remember the ones in Midwest City. Their utility director was of the opinion, you know, we don't need to maintain those, well, you know, there's a cost benefit ratio, because we spend about seven to ten thousand dollars on a tower every year to, to have Utility Service come and do it every, every couple of years, is it eight? Eighty thousand, well, that's all of them, though. That's all of them, right. But each tower, we spend a lot of money on, well, I'd much rather have the towers in good shape and looking good for the community as opposed to just not spending eighty thousand dollars a year on them, and, because you could really buy, build a new tower every so many years, and that can get nasty looking, but that's not, that's not the way to do business.
At the Oklahoma Water Resources, or, I mean, meeting at OML, some city had a hole up there in the tank, and pigeons were going in there roosting inside the tank, and the birds, it happens, what places?
It does.
Really?
It does.
And they were good to eat about it.
How pure's your water then?
I've seen so many of those things, so I do think the maintenance on those is very important.
So actually, you're talking about zone two, which is, which is, uh, includes...
Well, zone one is where the Edwards Tower is, that's where we proposed the...
So that's a new addition out there, too, but it's not including Grove School, according to this. Okay, clear the county road and all that.
The primary reason for the new tower is for additional storage, because DEQ wants you to have twenty-four hour emergency storage, and you have about two and a half million gallons now, and you need four to four and a half. So even though there are some pressure benefits and some fire flow benefits, primarily, the reason you need a new one is additional storage.
Well, zone four up there covers so much more area, and you're talking about, uh, half a million gallon?
Has some of this pipe upgrade already taken place? I mean, are we doing, like, I read about pipe bursting, does that have anything, or is that just...
Primarily sewer, uh, we're...
Oh, okay.
Steve can, can attest, and we've talked about this recently. You know, we did, we, we, we've done, last year, we had done three times as many water line repairs to date as we have this year. Primarily, the Kickapoo line allowed our staff to go off and work on other projects, because they weren't digging up Kickapoo all the time to fix it. What was that ratio, Steve?
We, uh, we've decreased sink rates by about thirty-seven percent in the last two years. And I was going to do that, a small staff report on the next mission. So you increased the size, and you increased the size, and we did some type of testing, and it reduces the velocity of the surge, right?
So yes.
Have we done anything about it, if I only have a main break, we bring the towers, has that been...
It does, during the towers, and use it the first one that goes, it's the switch tower.
You switched tower?
It's got a lot of demand on it, just got one tower.
We...
You can't put something in line, does it stop?
Well, you can't put a backflow, because people have tabs onto the line and feed the tower, that would be outwater, without water, if you did a backflow about once, what I was told.
Well, remember, too, a couple of years ago, we didn't have a dedicated valve team. The commission's approved some staff to increase SMA staff, and that's all they do, is work on valves. And we, we budgeted for that trailer this year that he'll be asking for, that has all their equipment, and it's air conditioned, and it's an expensive trailer, but it's important, the reason we, in, in August of twenty-ten, didn't have water in town is because we couldn't turn on, turn off, and isolate valves. We, they were half open, half closed, and we weren't maintaining them. So we needed to go in, and, and that initiative's really paid off, we've bought them vehicles, bought them equipment, we've got this new valve technique where we can go in and change out valves while the lines are, are, uh, pressurized. We don't have to turn off water to have the city in order to put them in, so that's, that was what our biggest issue was. It wasn't really necessarily capacity, is that we couldn't stop it from coming out of the tower when we had a main break.
Or end up saying, problem with the lines, fifteen years old, my house, it splits off to the different facilities. And I put all the valves and stuff in there myself, so I know they're good valves, but they...
They need to be worked, and they need to be maintained, and we weren't doing it.
Thanks.
Well, we can drive these citizens down bumpy roads, but they've got to have good water and good sewer, you know, and we really have to stay focused on this as a commission, and, and all the people down the road.
So we're gonna have, when we meet the twenty eight, we'll have that cost sheets for everything?
We'll put together a little spreadsheet, and, and you guys will have a quick little, uh, read as to what those costs are, and the times to put them in, and just a small little description of what, what each of those are.
What we're looking at tonight for the next five years, though, is somewhere around twenty million for both, for the water treatment and water distribution. Over the next five years, that'd, that would include like the, a new chemical building, but...
But you could take some without, I mean, you can do some without, out of present income. Say, I don't know how much, million, a million, half a year?
Ideally, I'd like to have the commission give us approval of, you know, a priority, like, it's kind of like we did with the CIP, and then we've got authorization then to go ahead and start working toward those, figure out how we're gonna pay for them, and then make those proposals to you guys down the road as to what our plan is to pay for them. And then you guys will then ratify that.
I'll tell you point blank, it's gonna be a tough day to try to sell another water rate.
I think you're right.
We can't go there.
Yeah, but, but what he's saying is, is that we just have to figure out a way down, you know?
Well, we have to pay off some stuff being paid off.
We've got fifteen million dollars in debt that's coming off, and we've got about twenty days that needs to come back down, so...
You're talking about five or six, eight years, that fifteen million coming off, right?
Well, but, I mean, we don't have to do these all at one time, we can, we can phase them out, we can actually do some with annual revenue, we're not around financing it. So, you know, we'll, we'll see how we can, by behalf of them, by the time.
Well, you know, it just, I, I guess, one of the biggest shocks to me as mayor, people don't, in the city, just don't realize that the, the tough decisions, that meaning how monumental they are, for down the road, for water and sewer, because it is just so expensive, and yet, you don't, you don't have any choice.
I say, where Norman pulled out of the big pipeline to southeastern Oklahoma, and they're gonna drill more wells and try to increase production locally for water.
But that's not gonna, from a long-term perspective, that's not gonna, that's not gonna help.
Well, they have a proposition that they can't raise any, any utility rates or anything else, it's kind of like, was that proposition thirteen, or what it was, went to California twenty-five years ago, well, Norman did that, so they can't raise rates.
Now, they're working on reuse, too, though, I think, and as quick as that gets passed, that's probably the, the solution to their problem.
You know, we could, I don't know why it's a payable situation, but some of this water, instead of dumping it back in the river out here at this north treatment plant, we could provide some of that, uh, mobile chemical in some of those places, they use lots of water. And provided at a reduced, reduced rate, and we're not, doesn't have to be treated, most of them will treat it to where they want it anyhow, so they don't, I mean, we should be, and that's not that big expense, it, it's probably a little expense, but it's not anything like a thirty inch line bringing it from a lake up here, but you're talking about expense, I know. You just have to sit down and put the pencil to it and see what, long-term, how long it takes it to pay for itself, and get a commitment from those companies.
That's definitely something we need to look at. Peak demand is something you guys need to think about. A lot of things that we're talking about, these guys have been talking about tonight, we're planning for worst-case scenario, August, pro- provisions of water to our customers. There, there are cities like Nevada and others who are still using the same much amount of water they did twenty years ago. They don't allow you to put siding in front of it, for example, you gotta put...
Pay the concrete GR, like I put it.
So I mean, that's, 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 that's probably too far-fetched for us, but there are some things, the mayor's got a, got a water conservation committee that he started up, and there are some things, we did some things when we did this last water rate increase. For example, when we are, under our old rates, what we did was, is the more you use, the less you pay. Now, the more you use, the more you... Now, the more you use, the more you pay. The X, Y axis goes the other direction now, so you're penalized for using more. Remember now, we did build our industries, and they understood that, and that's kind of the way the industry is going in terms of water supply as well. So those are other things that we can think of that, that will curb water usage, that don't cause us to have to spend millions and millions and millions for one thirty-day providing of water.
Trouble is, when we were in that drought, you can talk to people about water conservation, they're really interested, you know? Man, oh, what can I do? You know, put a brick in my flush, in my toilet, you know, tank, and do all that kind of stuff when we know water's bad. And all of a sudden, we get a rain, and they think that the lake is full. We get a two-inch rain, and they think, so we don't need to be conserving water.
Most of our citizens don't even know where it comes from, man.
Yeah, well, I don't know about that, but I, I know that it's just, it's, it's a tough issue.
Well, we have to look at maintaining our lake too. I mean, lakes have to be maintained like anything else, and I think that's where the city has been a little bit neglectful, you know, in the past. There's a lot of tributaries there that probably need to be cleaned, and I don't really believe that cleaning those tributaries and increasing the flow of water into the lake is gonna pollute the lake. There's a lot of soil in between there that is gonna filter that before it gets to the lake, but I was told that they did that, I guess, twenty, thirty years ago, and somebody named Bjorn was on the commission at the time, and they made an effort to go out and clear a serious clearing job of the tributaries leading into the Shawnee Twin Lakes, and it did increase or improved the water flow, and I think we kind of need to look at those things too, and everything has a cost, but that's, that's just one thing, I think, that wouldn't cost as much as some of the other options we're considering that ought to be on the table, and maybe the people that are on that water conservation committee can take a look at something like that too, because the Twin Lakes, we know, has a small watershed, and there are no major tributaries that feed into it, so we've got to capture that water when we can.
And that's why West Watkins is so critical to us.
And yes, unfortunately.
Because it has a good flow into it.
West Watkins has a good watershed.
I think when they get a big rain, Oklahoma City, West Watkins gets some of that, I mean, doesn't it?
It fills up a lot quicker than Twin Lakes, but what are the reasons?
Anything else?
No, I just wanted to hope that the way we presented it is easy to understand, because we went, both of us went through it to say, this is why we're doing it, instead of just saying willy-nilly, go out and fix this line, go out and fix that line. We tried to incorporate all the major critical issues and then lay out the table by year, by the amount of money that you may have to fix those on a, on a plan.
So for the next commissioner down the road, twenty years in that plan, you can be assured that that price won't be any higher than that, right?
I cannot promise that. I think we have an asterisk in there somewhere.
Yeah, well, then, really, the way I read the sewer part of this thing, we're not talking about, that's the expense. It's on the other side and not on this side.
Well, do we have any other questions then, Commissioner? Anyone else? Brian, do y'all have anything else you want to share with us?
I don't.
Then I'll entertain them, I'll just adjourn our meeting then.
There is a question.
Thank you.
Oh, there is a question.
Here's a question from Commissioner Aggie.
Some of those proposed upgrades, we are going to put in this next year's annual water line rehab project. There's, there's a lot of short line loops, you know, under three hundred feet, that we could probably get quite a few of them done pretty early.
Okay, does that, does that have anything to do with the loops that you were talking about in one of the meetings where there may not be a whole lot of water flow on a regular basis, and so the water gets stagnant in the line?
Yeah, so we'll take.
That was covered in the priority list as well.
Yeah, so we're gonna take our short ones and loop those together, and then we won't have to waste that water when we, when we have to flush.
Or you bleed it off in just a way.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
You know, along with water, I attended the city's GIS meeting. We were all invited to it. No, you weren't, all of you weren't, just a few, and then they're gonna give a presentation to us, but I thought it was so interesting. They've been long setting that stake, and it's feeding off a satellite where every water meter is and everything, you know, every sewer in our whole city, and then the, it's really so cool, and then the guys working out in the field looking for a water meter, they just turn on their cell phone, type in the address, and it'll show them. But some of the homes up on Broadway where I used to live, the water meter is back on beer, way back, a block behind their house. And you go out east on Main, everything that's east of Brian, all the water meters are set in one location down there by Main Street, you know? So it's crazy, so it's really exciting to see some of that kind of stuff. We're making some real progress in our city to see some of the great things.
I'm sorry, are we looking at maybe trying to meter all the water that the city uses instead of just like the water customers that pay, so that we know where the water's going?
We have been, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we call those the unbilled accounts, but they're actually water that's accounted for, they go to city buildings, the expo, parks, public works, places like that. We do.
Pool and all that, we all know how many gallons you use.
So, so they will be metered, and we will read those meters and account for that as, you know, unbilled account at the end of the year.
Yeah, accountability, I think, is another form of conservation.
The only things that's kind of hard to meter are the main breaks, because you don't really know how much water you're losing, you can kind of estimate that and average it, but.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Okay, I'll adjourn our special meeting, we'll have another one in two weeks, right?
Any moment, yes, sir.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Really appreciate it.